It's 6 o'clock. I'll call the meeting to order. It's Monday, September 19th. And we have both a select board meeting and a hearing. So starting with the meeting, first we start with general public comment. Anybody here for general public comment other than for the hearing? Susan?
Yes. In anticipation of Halloween, I was wondering what steps could be taken to make trick-or-treating safer in the village? Because people fly through here way too fast. And even when children are lined up shoulder to shoulder on the side of the road ready to cross, people don't stop. So I was hoping that maybe there could be some type of alert system to slow people down? Maybe some flashing lights or a fire truck or something? I don't know what that would look like, but I mean something really, I would really appreciate if something could be done because it's very dangerous.
Right, right.
It's happening to both sides, is it? You want that so?
Both ends, yeah.
I had actually recently seen something where it was volunteer people from the neighborhood that were trying to do crosswalk duty pretty evening. And that way it was kind of lights were provided and some adult was safely helping groups to cross the road. So I thought that was interesting.
What time would you think you'd want that? We have Stefan online here. Stefan might be able to-
They do the party at the town hall, the Halloween party, wouldn't they? Sometimes the younger kids come earlier before that, but they're usually accompanied by an adult and it's pretty well supervised. But once the party ends, the kids spread out through town. And they don't just stay on one side. I mean, they dart back and forth dangerously. Not gonna name names, but-
Yeah, no, are we talking like from 3:00 to 7:00 or something like that?
I don't know what time the party is, but-
There's all stuff to look into.
Stefan, can you hear this, Stefan?
I just barely got in. I missed the beginning.
Ideas for keeping the village safe for Halloween?
I know that in past years, we've set up a town truck with the lights flashing on either end of town. And I know it helps kind of people realize, alright, there's something going on. But I don't know necessarily if any other safety protocol that we can't really close down Main Street or anything like that.
Right.
Even the truck service is a big help, I think.
Oh, no.
Yeah, the trucks would be a big help.
Yeah, that would be great.
And then I think maybe some volunteers with yellow vests to help with crossing, that's a great idea.
I'd like that, yeah.
Maybe they have headlamps on or something. I don't know. Headlamps tend to blind people up.
Yeah, that'd be something.
You know, if you look right at a car, you know, the guy driving, obviously can't see.
I was thinking trick-or-treating back with blinking lights so that it's more visible. Oh, I think the trucks would be a huge help. I think that would really make people aware of activity.
I think it certainly would be a ring.
Hasn't been decided what day, or is it Sunday or Monday? I read an email a while ago of discussions, the school's wondering if it's gonna be Sunday.
Maybe he's asking about that.
Well, Halloween on a Monday, you don't think-
I know, but there's some talk about doing it, the whole thing on Sunday, you know? I don't know.
I think they tried that once before splitting it up and it really didn't go well.
Because people did it on both nights or one night of the year.
Why would they change it?
I don't know. Something that came from the school was asking or something.
Yeah.
They were asking our select board's opinion, so I mean, just bringing it up now because we might as well have that opinion as well.
My opinion is stay with the tradition.
Stay on Halloween?
Yeah, right.
Halloween, Halloween.
You've got your costume picked out already?
I don't need one.
And I think for the people in the village, we get so much traffic, that it meant two nights of doing trick-or-treating, you know?
Yeah, it's crazy.
A lot.
Okay.
Well, that would be great. If the trucks could be there, that would be wonderful. And then I like the idea of other people helping too.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
I wonder who we could follow up with about the crossing people, vests and stuff. I don't know who really organizes Halloween in town. Is there any one point person or does the school organize it or does it just happens?
I thought it was the school.
Maybe we suggest it to them about the crossing people.
Even if the guards who are accompanying the children wore something really visible, you know, it would help. Because when it gets dark and, you know, we've had rainy nights, it's just been, where people are hard to see and the way the people fly through town, I mean, I'm just amazed at people not slowing down. So the trucks would be a huge help.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
If they're not pounding snow. Yeah.
Don't say things like that.
Okay. Anybody else for public comment? Doesn't look like there's anybody online, so. Let's move on. Speaking of blinking lights, the discussion on the blinking speed limit sign.
The movable one?
The movable one, yeah. So we need to decide who to go with.
Did you find out? We're talking about the speed sign that's the trailer?
Yeah, the trailer, yes.
From my research on it, because I did a little research after talking to the sheriff about it, they like the stalker brand one better. I don't know what the price difference is between that and the other one, but I know that that's their choice. And it seems like it's, you know, more bang for your buck. As far as analytics, then, you know, keep track of how fast you're going and what car, what time of day the cars are going fast and that kind of data.
So are they familiar with the one from WorkSafe? Are WorkSafe?
I'm not sure. I don't know what the one from WorkSafe is, what brand it is.
The Vermac.
Oh, it's the Vermac?
Yeah.
I don't know that they are or not familiar with that.
Okay. I don't, but because my understanding was that they are virtually the same unit. And that the one through WorkSafe can do everything that the stalker one does. Isn't that what you-
That's what I thought, yeah.
My concern, Stefan, was, you know, WorkSafe isn't Berlin. It's a local company that if we had issues, it'd be easier to go to them than to deal with somebody from Texas or wherever they-
I agree with that. I mean, I don't know though, I know the sheriff's department has the software and such to read the stalker. I don't know about this Vermac one, but maybe it's a software that WorkSafe, you know, comes with it. I don't know much about as far as that problem.
They did forward that information on to you guys. They do service it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could ask those questions before we pull the trigger.
I think I forwarded it to everybody.
I'm gonna say, you know, that I did go through all the calculations as far as what everyone can do, but I think they're all pretty much, you know, I think those two are probably equal. And if they're equal and WorkSafe was lower price and they're local, I would prefer to stay with them.
Yeah, I agree.
WorkSafe was lower, I believe.
Yeah.
I can't remember, was it by a lot or-
It was under $1,000 difference between the two.
I don't know. I don't know, just if we're gonna be working with the sheriff's department, it might be, maybe defer to using something that they recommend. I'm sure they work with the one that's from Berlin as well, it must, right?
Yeah, well, I think WorkSafe listed a couple other towns that they had, they're working with. Was it, I think it was part of your information. I don't recall what towns they were.
In Washington County?
In Vermont.
Oh, but I mean, not Washington County, the sheriff's department would be working with that.
Right. It's our unit. Right.
Supporting local businesses, you know, is a big thing that I know that we've always strived for when we can. And, you know, if it makes sense where the price is cheaper and you get the same, you know, the same product, basically.
Do you want the motion to go with WorkSafe with the verse, verse amount? Verse amount, is it? Vermac trailer system. I'll second that. Any more discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Maybe we can set it up for Halloween?
I was gonna forget. Yeah, we could, maybe, have we got it? Okay. Moving on to overload restrictions, travel time. Any more information on that from Bus Barn or anything? Okay, so nothing more to it?
Yeah. I would propose that we give them a waiver that we could revoke if we found that it was becoming an issue with the buses. But I feel like most, all other towns allow trucks on the same road as the buses, so I feel confident that they can, you know, they can work together to get this done. Without putting unnecessary burden on the truck drivers.
Right, right.
So that's my opinion, that we should give a waiver to the trucks or give them the issue permit with the condition that we can revoke it anytime if we have complaints about not respecting the school bus traffic.
Right. Okay.
I mean, there's still the load limits in mud season and stuff like that.
Yes, right. Mud season's completely different.
And you still have all your ag vehicles that that overweight restriction doesn't apply to anyway. So your firm trucks can go through at the same time as a school bus and there's nothing you can do about it.
Did the ordinance that was in place, does it go back to the 50s or something?
It goes back a long ways.
Is it something that we at some point should remove as an ordinance? And have a different ruling or a different-
Yeah, I would think that.
... whole understanding for the use of the roads and law and trucks and stuff?
Maybe if we could have an article for town meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So you wanna make the motion or is that a motion?
I thought I did make the motion.
Okay, that's a motion, okay. Seconding the motion? I'll second it. Any more discussion then? All in favor of raise motion to issue a waiver for logging operations?
I think all the trucks, you know?
All trucks.
All the trucks.
All trucks. Say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And I think it would be good to keep it down there and discuss pulling that out of there because at this time, it's not-
You're having an article on finding the best way to rework the ordinance or something.
Okay. Well, it's 6:15. I'm not sure. Dick Valentinetti is supposed to be here.
I just saw a car pull up.
Okay.
Is Ron doing this?
No.
Ron Schim?
No, he's available.
I have fun.
He was on the news the other day.
Yeah? For?
I can't remember what he was talking about, but I looked and I was like, I know who that is.
Not Moretown business, huh?
No. No, it's someone from State. State wide thing.
Because I still don't know on the news when they advertise WCAS and they say what's going on in Drogenz and then they mention Moretown. I don't know what was happening, but- Hello, Richard?
Hi.
Perfect timing.
Okay.
The man is here, so I will call the hearing to order. Now, the purpose of this hearing is really for Frank Piazza to address the board. But we will go through and I'll give people a chance to speak. I have to apologize, I forgot my glasses, but I will read through the order. It's, "Dear Mr. Piazza, This is Public Health Order from 18 VSA Section 126. Based on the information provided by Richard Valentinetti, Health Officer for the Town of Moretown, the Select Board finds and concludes that, background: Frank Piazza owns the multi-unit dwelling at 1013 Route 100B in Moretown, Vermont, hereafter the property. Six units of this multi-unit dwelling residence house approximately six persons. On February 3rd, 2022, Health Officer for the Town of Moretown, Richard Valentinetti, conducted an inspection of the property. He inspected units number 1, 3, 5, and 6 in common areas of property. The inspection revealed the issues outlined below. Mold. The inspection revealed a leak in the bathroom of Unit 5. The leak is evident in the ceiling of Unit 6, which has visible water damage and mold issues. Mr. Valentinetti saw mold elsewhere in the apartment. Mr. Valentinetti has requested that the ceiling tile of Unit 6 be taken down to determine the extent of the mold on several occasions, but Mr. Piazza has not done so. Mr. Valentinetti inspected the property during a storm and witnessed the roof leak into the second floor hallway. In his experience, this can also cause mold. Failing to remedy light leaks and allowing mold to develop violates Section 10.3 of the Vermont Rental Housing Health Code, which requires the owner to maintain the property free from the regular or periodic appearance of standing water or excessive moisture, which may result in visible mold growth. Next, unsafe conditions, deterioration, and lack of maintenance. First, the railings on the porch of Unit 6 are missing and in need of replacement. A porch without railings is a safety hazard. The floorboards of the Unit 2 porch are in disrepair, rotting, and have plants growing through them. Tenants, guests, delivery persons, and others access the unit by means of the porch. The porch is a risk to the tenants as well as any delivery person or other members of the public who access the apartment. Sole stairway access to Unit 3 and Unit 5 is too steep and must be replaced. The internal egress in its current condition is a fire and health hazard. In March of 2022, Mr. Picard informed Mr. Valentinetti that the existing stairwell would be replaced with an additional staircase in the rear of the building. This has not been done. Mr. Valentinetti knows a substantial draft in Unit 6 and Unit 3. The bottom four inches of the walls of these units are not insulated. The baseboards are not insulated. This is a public health risk, particularly in winter months. This also, this is also a violation of Section 10.1 of the Vermont Rental Housing Health Code, which requires the owner of a dwelling house to maintain weather tight premises. Construction debris and junk is littered throughout the properties, creating dangerous conditions. The debris includes unusable lumber, glass, and appliances. Section 5, 5.31 of the Vermont Rental Housing Health Code requires owners to maintain a dwelling house in a clean and sanitary condition, free of trash, recyclables, and food scraps in all common areas as well as other parts of the premises not used as a dwelling space. Rodent infestation. Unit 5 was unoccupied and was not cleaned at the time of the inspection. The unit contained old food and was cluttered with discarded items. The unit was infested by mice. The mouse droppings were throughout the area, throughout the unit. Mice will enter other portions of the building through walls, ceilings, and other passages. Unit 5 is locked and Mr. Valentinetti has not been able to re-inspect the unit to date. Section 6.1.3 of the Vermont Rental Housing Health Code provides that the owner of a dwelling shall be responsible for extermination of any infestation in any dwelling unit when infestation in a dwelling unit is caused by his or her failure to maintain the dwelling or infestation exists in two or more of the dwelling units in any dwelling. Mr. Piazza has allowed the infestation to persist in violation of the code. Next, continued public health risks and hazards. The conditions in the building described above are a public health hazard. Six full-time residents are affected by the conditions of the property. Further, members of the public who have access to the property, including delivery persons, are exposed to risk from the conditions of the property. Mr. Piazza has had several opportunities to rectify the public health hazards voluntarily, but has instead allowed the hazards to continue and develop. The conditions throughout the building pose a significant public health risk. The presence of mold from leaks throughout the property could endanger residents. The lack of maintenance of the porches, both railings and floorboards, creates a safety risk. The steep egress of Units 3 and 5 poses a safety risk. The drafts in Unit 6 and Unit 3 create unsafe conditions in winter months. The construction debris throughout the yard creates a hazardous condition. The presence of rodents in the building has a potential to spread disease. Taken together, these conditions amount to a significant risk to the public health. Frank Piazza has the authority to address these problems. Mr. Piazza has allowed the problems described above to develop and worsen over the past eight months. After the inspection, Mr. Piazza had several opportunities for voluntary compliance. Mr. Valentinetti sent a letter detailing the issues to Mr. Piazza, which was delivered on February 17th, 2022. Mr. Valentinetti sent a follow-up letter on March 11th, 2022, also asking for a progress report on repairs and remediation. Mr. Valentinetti sent an email to Jason Picard on March 22nd, 2022. A brief progress report was sent in response from Mr. Picard to Mr. Valentinetti on June 8th, 2022. Mr. Valentinetti again asked Mr. Piazza to address the remaining issues in a July 1st, 2022 letter. To date, Mr. Piazza has not addressed the issues described above. The above described violations continue to date. The Select Board of the Town of Moretown pursuant to 18 VSA Section 126 and other applicable authority orders that, on or before October 15th, 2022, Mr. Piazza shall fix the leak in Unit 5 and remove the ceiling tile in Unit 6 to determine the extent of the lack of the leak and the extent of mold. Mr. Piazza shall remove and remediate any mold by the same date. On or before October 15th, 2022, Mr. Piazza shall clean Unit 5 and eradicate the rodent infestation in the unit. On or before October 15th, 2022, Mr. Piazza shall replace the porch railing of Unit 6 with an adequate railing fully meeting the requirements of the Vermont Fire and Building Safety Code and NFPA 101, Section 7.2.2.4.6. On or before October 15th, 2022, Mr. Piazza shall replace the Unit 2 porch with a porch fully meeting the requirements of the Vermont Fire and Building Safety Code. On or before October 15th, 2022, Mr. Piazza shall remove the construction debris throughout the yard. On or before October 15th, 2022, Mr. Piazza shall develop and deliver to the health officer a plan to replace the egress stairway to Units 3 and 5. The egress shall be replaced by May 15th, 2023. On or before October 15th, 2022, Mr. Piazza shall develop and deliver to the health officer a plan to repair the leak in the roof of the building. The leak shall be fixed by May 15th, 2023. On or before November 15th, 2022, Mr. Piazza shall fully isolate Unit 3 and Unit 6, including the baseboards where the draft was detected. Mr. Piazza shall allow and cooperate with implementation of the health order. The tenants of the property shall cooperate with Mr. Piazza to assure compliance with this health order. Upon reasonable notice, Mr. Piazza shall allow the health officer to inspect the premises to determine compliance with this health order. Inspections shall occur between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. So ordered on September 2nd, 2022, Moretown Select Board. Dick, would you like to-
Yeah, I didn't read it as my name. I was so freaked we ended this order until you read it.
Well, you're the man, right?
Yeah. No, I think they wanted to speak for itself. It's just been a difficult year since back in February when I first did an inspection and continually looked for progress reports from either Frank or Frank Piazza or his maintenance person, Jason Picard, and have virtually had none with the exception of the email in June. So that's basically where I stand on this. I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding the health order itself.
Okay. Any questions from the board, first before? Okay. Questions from?
No, actually I have a question. If none of these dates are met or any of this work is performed, I'm a little unclear, what's the next step? I mean, I'm not familiar with the statutes that are being referenced to those end of carrying.
They're health departments statutes of the rental court and they could be enforced by either state's attorney or the health department or our attorney. I mean, the town could take action to it.
I mean, but what, is it a fine? Is it the-
Could be.
The town takes, repairs the property and gets reimbursed or what?
Basically, you'd have to go to court and get a judge's decision on what the remedy of the health order is. Could be a fine, could be any, any other remedy.
No, a fine doesn't fix it.
No, a fine doesn't fix it.
Question, Deborah?
Yeah, I'm just curious. We've got several dates that were mentioned as to it needs to be done by October fifteenth and then, but all the way to May of two thousand and twenty-three. So does that mean that people can be living in squalor until May of two thousand and twenty-three? And then, then the shoe drops? Or does it drop after October fifteenth? Does it drop again after that November date? And?
Who's on any of these dates? In other words, some of these things that go into two thousand and twenty-three are major construction issues.
I guess my questioning is, we haven't seen any action so far. So do we just let these dates go by until May of two thousand and twenty-three?
No, October fifteenth is the first due date.
And so whose responsibility is it to, like, trigger the next step? Who's, who's responsible, who takes that responsibility? And how does, what does that mean, that a lawyer gets, I don't understand the process?
Well, the town attorney would get involved, but there's a number of ways of, of dealing with it, including, again, there's a health apartment regulations. Health apartment has the ability, the state has the ability to enforce these as well as the town or, this is, this is basically something that the state's attorney could also enforce.
So is it you who comes back to the select board on October fifteenth to say nothing's been done? And then the select board decides the next act? You know, I'm just confused.
Well, I haven't had to go through this before, so I'm not sure. I did a lot of enforcement in my, my former life, but this is the first time as a health officer, we're taking something, we have the possibility of taking something to court, you know, to get a judge's, a judge's rule. So I'll have to talk to the town attorney. But I'm looking at October fifteenth as a drop dead date to, in fact, do some of the work that needs to be done right now. And that has just not been done.
Would it help if we had Ron on the phone? Sure, we might be able to answer some of these questions.
Well, can we talk a little bit, get Ron on the phone? Because John, Mr. Summers is here, and he was talking about this today, and he has some, some. Input, yeah.
Hi, Ron. Okay, how are you? So we have quite a few questions here. Okay, the, the big question was, okay, so what if? We've got several things that have to be done by October fifteenth. Number one, who checks to make sure they're done? And number two, what happens if they're not done?
They would check if they're done with the health officer. And if they're not done, I would, I would, you know, with the select board's request, I would take it to court to enforce the health order.
Okay, so you would take it to court to enforce the order?
Yeah, you know, the other thing is, you know, if October fifteenth is for some reason not doable, you have the ability to change dates and to tinker with health orders. This is something that the select board is issuing. And so, you know, it's up to you to impose deadlines if you think they can be had.
Okay.
You know, we, when we, when we drafted this, we thought these were reasonable. But if, if for some reason, because you're hearing evidence that, that I, that Dick did it and I did it, you do, you do have the authority to change some of the dates and then issue it accordingly.
Well, I think, I think the, the dates that concern, concern us are the ones where, like, there's one that doesn't have to be done. It's the egress of the stairway to Units Three and Five don't have to be replaced, doesn't have to be replaced until May fifteenth. And then there's a leak in the roof, and that's until May fifteenth of two thousand and twenty-three as well.
You can type that if you want, or you can move it. It's, it's up to the select board discretion based on the evidence you're hearing.
Okay. Okay. You have some questions, Johnny, did you want to? Can you hang on there? We may need you again.
If he calls into the.
You know, Ron, can you call in to the select board meeting?
Um, how do I do that? Do I just go to the website and play?
Yeah, you can go to the Zoom, you go to the Zoom, Zoom meeting. How does, how does he do that? Yeah, that's probably the easiest thing. Just go to the website to the agenda. And then click on the Zoom, and then you'll pop up on the screen.
I'll be right there.
Okay, good.
It's, it's been that I, it says the leak can wait till May?
Yeah, it's, it's a leak in, that I noticed after I did the original inspections. When I went up the staircase, there was a lot of water coming down, indicating that the roof had issues. You know, I figured that something like the roof is something which is a major repair, and that's why I was talking about May of twenty-three to get that fixed.
For the leak in the unit, he has to do by October.
Right.
There's a question out here.
Can I make a comment?
Yeah, sure.
Like, I know you haven't witnessed this one actively, but we have video, but there is a leak in our unit right above our propane heater, and it leaks onto the propane heater, and that's been there since we moved in. There's water stains on the ceilings. We've addressed this with Mr. Piazza back in October of twenty-one, so he's been aware of it. The photos, actually, the back of the photos that he had had, that he had sent us before we rented the unit, and I did notice that there was signs of that leak there. So this is something that's systemic, that's been going on for possibly decades. So I think these due dates are arbitrary. He's not going to meet them. He's already been given multiple due dates since February. I don't think that matters. He's not going to do it. And if winter is coming, so, you know, we all live there.
Oh, hey, Ron. So we have a tenant that says that she feels that since we've had due dates before, he's probably not going to meet these. I don't even know where he is. Has anybody seen him around or anything?
Yes.
Yes. What do you, what do you know, Johnny? Go ahead.
I can address this. Did you want to speak first or?
Oh, I already, I already said what I had to say. Yes, thank you.
So I'd like to preface my remarks about commenting on Frank Piazza. Most people, he has known him a long time. He's been around him for fifty years. He's had a successful business all that time. He's rented property all that time, has provided housing for lots of people all through this time. Right now, he's an elderly man in failing health. With those of us who know him well or friends of his, have been working very hard to try and ameliorate his situation. He's in a very precarious situation, and he's unable to address his business affairs correctly. And I think that everyone should understand this, which is the stem of most of his problems. I can't say that, you know, he was a shiny example, a landmark all these years, but right now, he's in serious trouble. He's been in hospital, he's been hospitalized two or three times lately. He was quite out of, he's doing a little bit better now. I have very, very serious concerns about his ongoing health and situation. And what I would recommend, after thinking about the situation, is that he should be dealt with as strictly and as severely as possible in these matters with a hope that it will bring him around to finally dealing with the matters as they should be dealt with. He needs to be moved out of his house. He's, you talk about squalor, his house is untenable. Have you been in there?
No.
No, it's, it's.
It's a private house.
It's, it's, I can't, I can't describe how bad it is. It's awful. I was very worried when he was ill during the month of August, that he was a danger to himself and a danger to others when he drives. He seems to have stabilized quite a lot now. The last few days, I'm talking about what's been going on. I should say also, I'm talking about him, and he's not here. I'm not authorized to talk about him. You ask me his situation, how he's doing, I'm letting you know. This is just Johnny Summers saying what he's seen and my opinions. Please keep that in mind. I have no authority to speak to Frank whatsoever. But I do have a lot of concern for him, as do my friends and my family. So we're trying to do the best thing we can. And as I said, if there's anything we can do to bring him to, not to his senses, but to indicate that this can't go on any further, i.e. by dealing with the magic matters we're talking about tonight, as severely as possible and without any delay. And I think that would be good for him. His doctor recommended he goes into assisted care. He gets legal help to sort out his affairs. He gets someone to deal with his affairs, and then he has a good chance to survive for a while. Failing that, I quote his doctor, saying, "You'll die, and the state will absorb all your profit." And if that's what he wants, we can't stop him from doing that. But I think one of the reasons I came tonight was to see the outcome of this, because I am very concerned about it. And what I say is, I think if we deal with this as severely as possible and strictly as possible, and it might help to move him to the place where he realizes he's going to do something. Otherwise, he's going to procrastinate, probaricate, if nothing will get done, I can assure you of that. And his, his maintenance, so-called maintenance man, can't help very much. He's been there right along, and he does what he can. But I don't see any good outcome the way things are going, unless we, I say we, I'm trying to do things for him. I actually spoke to the Adult Protective Services. As you guys know, I'm EMT, I'm bound by my license to report anything dangerous I see or incorrect with calls I go on. Adult Protective Services replied to me, they don't deal in self-harm. They suggest the Council on Aging. I've been working with them as well. This is a very serious situation. It's not unique. I'm sure this happens in other places, other times, but this is what we're dealing with now. So I'm actually glad to let you people on the Select Board know what's going on, give you a better picture of why we're in this situation.
If you have any more questions, you can.
Thanks, John. So, well, in terms of October fifteenth.
Maybe that's too far away.
Maybe it is. Mike, Ron?
Yeah, if, you know.
Yeah, if, you know, I think what Johnny just said is, is helpful context and can, is maybe incentive for us to look toward, you know, other remedies to help Frank. But the, the issue here is, is the welfare of his tenants as opposed to Frank's welfare. And so that, that has to be first and foremost what, what the Select Board's considering. And that, but that certainly doesn't mean you should, you should not do things in addition, such as what Johnny suggested.
So why is for the tenants that if, if we set a date, then the only way Frank can, or he doesn't meet it, and then he puts his tenants out? I mean, he has that option, right? There's nothing that says he can't say, "I'm just not going to deal with it. Everybody's got a role." Is, is there, or is there something else that I don't know about?
Well, there's a legal process provision, and he's been trying to do this legally since it's retaliatory, since we've been trying to communicate with him since, he hasn't spoken to us since October of two thousand and twenty-one. We've, of course, been looking for other housing options, but I'm sure all aware of the housing crisis. And we aren't the only tenants of Frank. He has other buildings that are in the same condition. And that he seems, it just seems to be a pattern that he's been doing. Many people have been harmed by this. Many people have been living in mold. Many people have been falling through full floors and, you know, there's one tenant in that building who hasn't had heat or hot water for four years. And we can't do anything. We have nowhere else to go. We work in this town. We work at the school, we work at the library, we're postal workers, I don't know. I mean, we have reached the limit of what we can do, and because we can't communicate with Frank, and he's unwilling to do anything or ask for help, we've offered to help him so many times, but he will not communicate with us. So we're at our, I mean, we don't want to be here. We just want to live our lives and be part of the community, but there's really no other options. And we are all at risk of homelessness. There's nowhere else to go or that we can afford. We would have to relocate and start our lives over, and we just did that. So I, I really, if there's something else that we can do or work together to remedy this, this is the only affordable housing in the area.
I would add, speaking to Frank about his business affairs, I questioned him about how many empty apartments he had, or if ever he was fully rented. And he revealed to me that several of his units are empty and not rentable. And to my mind, in this day and age, with a crisis in housing in this valley, and what, throughout the country, throughout the state, and right here in this valley, what he's doing is criminal. People need places to live, and thanks to Deaf Acadians, places are unavailable. And he's entitled to do that, but because of what's been going on, and when we hear this harm to tenants and so on, he should, I say, he should report to book with a hope that he will, you know, make a change. But I can't talk to him. I can't get through him.
Yeah, I'm not a professional health officer, but I also am a health officer in Duxford. And there's three units over there that are now empty that I'm going to put in order not to have it be rented until the, until it's up to code. So there is a lot of available housing, not available.
Yeah, it's, it's wrong that this place should be empty. It's up to him, of course, but in this day and age, with his need, because he's been deteriorating in his mental, physical conditions, and it's just too bad. And I, you know, the tragedy of this situation is what I would, I would express to you guys and see how best we can deal with it. And my suggestion is to be very firm and strict.
I mean, Ron, can we change, make the date earlier that, that, or that he can take some action or something to?
You're, you're.
You're, you're fully entitled to make the dates earlier if you want. This is, this is the Select Board's or the Town Board Health Order, which is the same thing as, as the Select Board. You're allowed to do what's, what's reasonable, what, what Dick Valentinetti, with our help, suggested. There were suggestions. We, we gave the, we gave the Select Board a template. But based on the evidence, you guys can make things stricter, make things looser. It, it's up to the Select Board to, to make the decision. You know, again, the issue here are his tenants, people with whom Frank has, has basically a contract to be able to rent habitable living to. And so it has to be fixed. If for some reason the worst is, is to happen to Frank, it falls onto the estate as opposed to, you know, some other person. So you, you've got to keep your eye on, on what the goal. So you've got to keep your eye on what the goal is here, which is to make, to take the quickest route to assure habitable.
Well, I would make a recommendation that we change the October date to September 30th date, so that we can proceed as quickly as possible in terms of bringing this to...
To December 20th. I mean, what should go on?
I have a question from Ron. As a tenant, I think the law says that if the repairs are not done, can they do them and then withhold the rent to cover the expense that they incurred doing the repairs?
Yeah, he's been withholding rent since February, which is why he's trying to evict us, and he's been retaliating and threatening us on multiple accounts, which is ultimately not good.
Also, I'd like to add, what the price of these repairs are reportedly to wouldn't be fair for us to have to pay. Because reasonably, even though we are withholding rent and holding that in a separate account, that still wouldn't cover the cost of a majority of these repairs.
Yeah, because one concern I have is, I don't know how quickly you could find anybody to do the repairs.
That's no surprise.
Because, I mean, I know for a fact that anybody who can do them is really busy.
Well, he does have an witness person.
Well, Jason DeKalb. No, it doesn't sound like he's...
When we moved in, Jason had promised us that it would take two weeks to have railings and the porch fixed and have the debris cleared. Because we have animals, so my major concern was glass and nails and construction. So that was the first, like, time that I noticed something was a mess when it was promised two weeks later. And then when I reached out to him about it, it was, "Yeah, yeah, I'll get to it next week. You know, I'm busy." And that's just been more of the same.
That was October of 2021.
That was October of 2021.
If Jason DeKalb was reliable and got on the jobs, these problems, his problems wouldn't have arisen. That's your answer right there.
I agree.
But he must get that from Frank, who tells him not to really do it or something, right?
No, I think Frank would be pleased, and of course Frank would say just what John said. You can't get anyone now, not that he's trying really hard. And plus, anyone who's got, you know, anyone today can work for whoever. They're not going to work for Frank. He has a poor reputation. So it's a very awkward situation.
Plus, I also believe he's taking Jason's professional opinion on the matter as well. So whatever Jason's opinion might be on the state of the house, he's probably going to listen to that. Or at least that's my impression of that. Which is a lot of flexi that gets existed. They try to fix everything with cans of flexi. But also, yeah, each time we interact with Frank, he says that Jason does not communicate with him. And then when you talk with Jason, he's like, "It's too hard to come over here and fix things because Frank tries to get all the tenants to fix stuff. And then I have to come and do twice the work to repeat, like, to repeat, do the work that already needed done."
It's just nice communication.
So, yeah, random communication. And, I mean, for us, zero communication now with either of them, which is uncomfortable because they still come to the property regularly to use the dumpster. And so do all those other tenants. And it's just, that's how we get to meet everyone. And it was just appalling enough to know and love our neighbors and find out that they're dealing with equal or their own unique set of dangerous circumstances in each unit. But then to meet the people that come by the property, to put a check into the slot of the door each month for this person. You have a conversation with them, and you quickly find out that they're dealing with these axing stuff where they are. And they're sharing their own stories of parts of their roofs caving in and having to cover hundreds of dollars of plumbing bills just to have toilets that work. And then being told, "No, I'm never going to reimburse you for this." Like, you called a professional plumber to come do work for you, and that doesn't fly, so...
Frank owes us money as well. We replace things, and he has not reimbursed us. As well as, he's stuck us with paying bills when we have gas leak. And, you know, the list goes on. That's our time and energy that we have to try to get these charges off our bills, where he's the one that has all the authority on these accounts. Irving has also said that they're about to take the tanks off the property because they can't deal with him anymore, which means no one will have heat or hot water. So this is a crisis, and we're willing to work with, I mean, we've been willing to work with Frank even the way he is because we understand that the housing crisis is serious. We all need to be involved in creating a solution. But we only have so many resources. And, I mean, we have no power. There's really not much we can do. So whether it's, you know, repairing this place or coming up with a better idea for housing in the valley, I mean, we'd like to be part of that conversation. This is ridiculous.
Well, the reason that I said September 30th was so that Ron could get ready because we're going to have to go to court anyways on this. But if you wanted September 19th or 20th, I don't care. I'm just, I'm just trying to figure, if it seems like we're going to have to go to court on this order, we might as well do it as soon as possible. What do you think, Ron?
Yes, as long as it's a reasonable deadline. And you know, I've just moved it up, for the safety of moving it up. But if it could get done by September 19th, that makes sense. We don't want to delay things anymore.
Today's September 19th.
September 19th.
September 30th.
That Dick just suggested.
I mean, what if we use one of the dates you aren't giving him to replace some of these things? I mean, you've given him dates that were back in March to fix the ceiling, I think, in their unit. I mean, that's well overdue.
Well, I jokingly said the 20th when Dick said the 30th. Once again, my view is to provoke Frank, you know, let him know what's going on. Soon he gets a court order. Soon he sees what's really going on. It might bring him to a sentence. It might do nothing. But there's nothing to be gained by waiting until the 30th or the 15th of October. Nothing whatsoever.
That was with the house, the White House, where the curves start, that didn't have water. When he violated the health order, we went to court, and that forced compliance right away.
Yeah, but he doesn't even have a living man now either. And Ron hurdle road, you're talking about?
On 100B, just, yeah, just on the corner of hurdle.
Not rented. It's, he's, you know, what I've been told is, he's trying to sell it so that it becomes a private residence and therefore not under the jurisdiction of the health officer or the health board.
Is he not fed for the health office to work the building yet?
No.
I know, but it doesn't matter if that one's, it's private. There's plenty to...
Right.
The health office on this, yeah, for the leads guy.
I think Ron's point was that when he got served an order on that, what did he do? He put it over.
He fixed the water to a point where it was usable, rather than people taking a hose and trying to get the water out of the brook.
Right.
So, doesn't he, he still has to be served this order, right? So...
He's been served.
He's been served this order.
Yes.
So...
I'm going to propose that we move the date up to a week from tomorrow, which will be September 27th. We'll give him one week. I think that's reasonable. We've got time for him to either move, and he gives us time to think what our action's going to be as well. Should I go on that?
Sorry.
Yeah, but what are we going to do? Does he get served something tomorrow? It says he's now until the 27th. Does Ron draft something? I don't, you know, what's going to make him move? A fine? Is he going to have a fine attached to it or something?
Yeah, what, what do we do then?
If you change the dates, we would change the health order. We'd serve him with a final signed health order as soon as we could. And if he violates the health order, then we take it to court.
So, do you want to, tomorrow draft a new order?
I would change the dates and make...
And sign it tonight?
Yeah, yeah, just change the dates and sign it tonight, and we'd serve it tomorrow. And if he violates it, we would file a complaint in court like we did last time. Actually, last time, I think we threatened to file it in court. I served his lawyer with what I was about to file in court, and that prompted compliance.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion on that?
That's a step.
All in favor?
I mean, an action.
How are we going to know in a week whether or not there's been compliance?
We're going to have to do inspections.
Okay, and so then you would tell the select board that you guys don't meet again until...
We can call them. I'm already seeing them.
Can the tenants report compliance?
I'm sorry?
Can the tenants report if they've been compliant in a week's time?
Yeah, before, sure.
Yeah, well, we're in touch.
Check things on Sunday. After having a couple of few seconds more. Any other discussion? Go ahead.
To go to court, I would need, I would need Dick to say there's not compliance or the tenants to say there's not compliance. And I would need the select board to authorize me to file suit.
Okay. All right, any more discussion?
Yeah, of course. When that step takes place, then what happens? I mean, you said that his lawyer negotiated with you, and then they took some action, and then you didn't have to go to court. So is it conceivable to either try to do that step? But if it goes to court, are there, is it then some financial fines involved? I mean, what motivates him from then on? He loses the property. What happens?
Property, what happens? There are fines. It goes to court. It raises the level of, you know, of the seriousness of the offense. So, yeah, no, this is an enforcement action. So we negotiated it last time, and the select board approved the settlement. And, you know, any action has to be approved through the public process by the select board. So there'll be transparency involved.
Is there any responsibility on behalf of Frank for the safety and well-being of his tenants once they are potentially affected, when these buildings are condemned? Is there any responsibility anywhere? Or, I mean, isn't he legally bound to house us since that was the original agreement? And since he hasn't been able to do so safely? I mean, this is the conditions for two years now, and we're risking, I mean, we've already risked plenty of mental health and safety. But now, you know, what if the only solution is to condemn a building? What happens to the dozen people that rent from him?
Did you hear all that?
I missed part of the question. I heard any responsibility on the part of Frank, but I wasn't, I didn't put it here for what?
Part of this place is neglected. Is there any responsibility where we are able to see any sort of justice financially, so we can figure something else out? Or does he have to pay for a hotel or to house us somewhere else? I mean, there's at least a dozen people that I know of that rent from this man. And if all his properties are taken away or condemned, what happens to the people that live there?
Well, you know, right now, what the town would do would be to issue the health order and to enforce that order. Issues beyond that would either require another health order as appropriate or it would be private matters, the damages between Frank and his tenants.
So how would we seek representation in court to collect damages like that if we're clearly, you know, not resourced enough to do so?
Yeah, right now, the select board's job is to enforce the health code. And, you know, private damages beyond that, you'd have to consult an attorney.
Any final discussion on that motion? Ray's motion was to shorten the date, shorten up the timeframe. And so now it is on or before September 27th, 2022. And I would say that's across the board for everything. None of this made 15. So everything's going to be changed to September 27th. So all in favor of that? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Dick. Any other?
Sasha will be in touch in the morning.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Thanks so much for coming.
You guys all set with me?
Yes, thanks, Ron. I'm sure we're going to have a special meeting. Motion to adjourn the hearing?
I'll make a motion.
Seven? All in favor? All right, okay. Okay, back to the meeting. Reports of communications, motions and all that stuff. Sasha, what do you have?
Just a second. Um, Luttrell Road Bridge. They're going to be starting work on that October 17th. And it's going to need to be closed during the day. And we need some direction as to letting residents know about that.
I would say that we need to send them letters, huh?
Yeah.
So was that Mary Fleming and the other house there, the other folks there? So it's just closed during the day?
Just during the day.
Can they walk across it, do they?
I don't know. It's going to be some kind of a lift so they can do the repairs. I'm not sure.
I'm sure that they can walk across it.
I mean, you know, someone...
The lift is going to be parked there, you know, the woodwork underneath the bridge. So I'm sure if they have to walk across...
Yeah, I mean, if they wanted to get home, you know, during the day, you could walk. You know, it's not a big walk. It's just right off.
I'm sure of that. Something will have to work out with the contract. I would think that they...
They said that they could deal with emergencies. If there's an emergency, somebody needs to...
Yeah, they said 20 minutes.
20 minutes.
Yep.
It's a long time. If it's an emergency, 20 minutes.
Right, so you're better off getting off the road.
How long is the overall project? Did they say? I didn't see that.
Seven to 10 days.
Yeah, two weeks.
But it's just those two times that it'll be closed?
It's starting on the 17th. It's going to be every day that week and then into the next week. So letters. Guy Martin stopped in last week. Guy Martin stopped in last week and would like to know if he can access his land. He said that he remembered a meeting where everybody was on site and he was promised some material to get access there. Does anybody recall that or want to?
I don't know, no, no material. That was on the, the relocation of the trail.
I mean, this.
So he can access his land, there's a right of way from there, but it's across the brick. Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Where is this, I don't know if I, I don't think there was.
Blodgett, yeah, you're, you're on it.
Oh.
Yeah, it's been going on so long. It's been, yeah, Blodgett.
Oh, oh.
Yeah. His access was between the two Blodgett houses and now it's above, um, Mr. Blodgett's house.
Yeah, that's, it's not really clearly marked either.
That's, I think.
Well, I thought that that was part of the deal. I thought the surveyor was going to go out and market and we were going to cut the trees so everybody knew where it was.
Right.
That would be a.
That was the plan, I remember that, just they knew that.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know if that's changed or not with this, you know, the time that's gone by.
So getting it marked is one thing. And clear trees, you said?
Yes. Because I think Mr. Blodgett at one time said he was going to want of those trees or whatever.
Yeah.
Right, the house. The last thing I have is, oh, Mandy, she sent an email about, I guess with COVID, they've stopped with putting the flag up every day because of the restrictions. I don't know if it's the kids being too close together or what, but she was wondering if there was any ideas for keeping it up and having a light on it.
This would be, principle, on principle. Keeping it up and having a light on it.
I, I know, what I use at my house, I have the, the solar ring that goes on the top of the flagpole and it works, I've had it for five years and.
Just a little ring?
Yeah, you can get them at that fireplace in my family.
Yeah.
And it works really well.
And has anybody?
Well, wait, she doesn't want to, I just have to ask one question. They, they usually raise the flag.
They used to before COVID, every day they were doing it.
And now, is it still even now of the, of the students being around the flagpole?
Yep.
And the flag going up and being too close?
Yep. The last thing I have is the website's had a lot of work done to it and I just wanted to see if you guys had any feedback or if you could look at it and.
I looked at it today.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's easier for sure.
Yeah, it's definitely easier. And what about the, um, Med River TV? Their request, $250.
I thought they were going to be here.
What was that?
I, 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 I think they said they tried to, but.
250, yeah. From ARPA ones.
I had, I would then pay with the $250, I don't know if it.
Yeah, I don't know if you can find the ARPA either, yeah.
Put it in the ledger or something.
Yeah. Do you need a motion? Yeah, I'll, I'll make the motion that we, uh, uh, make a donation of $250 to Med River Valley.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Do you know if that, is there a deadline on when you need it or? Do you know if there's, in terms of the $250?
Oh.
No?
I don't know anything about it.
I don't know.
I could send an email.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay, ready, you have something?
I think everything I got is, uh, either under own or new business.
Okay. Callie?
Yeah, I think everything I have, you know, probably done that too.
Okay. Tom?
Yeah, no, communication.
Okay, then now, I guess, yeah, everything else would be under, uh, old business. So, Clark's gonna, oh, Clark's not going to be here. Clark was supposed to be here at seven. So we didn't hear from Clark. Okay, all right, so old business. Are we going to prove the mess first?
I make a motion before the minutes of September 6th.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, so now go on with old business. Frank, go ahead.
Okay, so a few things. I met with the ARPA committee last Wednesday. Their main question is what the select board is looking for from them as far as guidance. And I pretty much told them that I think we're going to wait till after Morfest because, you know, there's going to be some, uh, discussion at Morfest on, on the funds. And that they would, they should plan on coming in to see the select board early, sometime in October as far as finalizing any recommendations to the board on the ARPA money.
Okay.
That sounds all right. And I told you last week, there was a discussion with.
Oh, wait, before you leave that, can we, can I just, the opera?
Yeah, sure.
I think it's, we, we have, I just said this is just a rough draft of, but right now, as far as I know, in, in terms of the opera funds, we've got 50,000 to see the fiber, right?
Right.
There was some chat, this is not committed, but maybe using some like a hundred thousand for the tax, saving our tax, reducing the tax.
Well, more of a select board fund, you know, discretionary.
Yeah. Then we had, uh, 25,000 to, um, neck of the woods, right? We committed to that for the opera funds. And then we've got the town hall, 22,000 for the, um, architectural work. Waterbury ambulance was four, but I think we decided we were either going to maybe budget that or take it from the opera funds.
Right.
And then, um, possibly using a hundred thousand for the tanker truck. So, I mean, you know, we, we have, we've got some of the funds that are happening.
Right.
Is there a spreadsheet for that? Like a working spreadsheet?
There is.
Yeah, I think there needs to be, so we can kind of look, you know, what the project is, what it details, the date you want it, the anticipated funds, what you batched.
Oh, exactly.
Done with the calculations so you can add it out.
But I think, I don't know if the opera committee is aware, that's why when they come in, I mean, I don't know if they're aware.
I did forget about the neck of the woods on it, I'll, I'll, I'll let them know tomorrow and certainly I can put together a spreadsheet easy and just everything.
But I do, I do think we said the Waterbury ambulance, we would just do it in the budget like we do other, our other ambulances or something. This was just in the truck notes, I took one when we were talking the night about it.
Yeah, if there's one with a formula in it so you can see when you put stuff in if it pulls it out. That makes it.
So the sidewalk repair, uh, the last time I told you the landlord, I think it's, what is it?
David.
David, David.
David, okay. So I talked to him today and he's okay with Joe going in and fixing as it is. I explained to him that we, we cannot change any of the curbing. Like, we're just going to pour it right to the curbing, just like it is, and we're just going to go with it, eight inch concrete instead of five inch. And he was okay with that.
Oh, good.
Guys are going to go forward.
Good.
When is, when is that work going to happen?
That should happen, Joe, I, um, I think within the next two weeks now. He was all set up to do it and then we had that issue, so he went to another job.
And he's going to be pouring concrete with like.
Yes.
A trucks coming with him?
Yes, so you want to try to pour your base at the same time? Is that what you're getting at?
Possibly, I'm trying to work on chasing down the, the pole brackets system.
Yeah, no, that'd be good. I think we could work.
But I also was talking to a, a, a concrete guy who said he, you know, well, I told him, I said, oh, yeah, he might be able to help as well.
Yeah, and Joe, if you want to try to work with Joe and try to do all that together.
Yeah.
That'd be good, yeah. Yeah.
I don't know if we can be ready in two weeks, but we'll see. Well, you know.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what Joe's schedule is exactly. I say two weeks, but.
Yeah.
It could be, I don't know. But, um, that's all I got for old business.
Okay. Callie, you have something?
Well, I guess it's kind of legal trails, um, it's kind of events that actually could be reports, communications too, but, um, there's a vehicle up Offland Hill that's been there, it's been reported multiple times, it's been reported to the sheriffs. They didn't do anything about it per se. It's still up there and now it's smashed. So whoever's it was. Whoever it was, one of their rolled it over, smashed all the glass out. There's also two nice tire marks, two holes in where the grant work is done, to cut it up on chill. So I, I don't know what, I mean, it kind of, it's not a real legal trail, but it's a class four road issue that we've been going into.
And no one else's vehicle it was?
I thought, uh, I thought Sean said that they, maybe who the owner was that they reported was their police, but.
Yeah, it was reported to the sheriffs. It was reported to, um, Fish and Game because apparently the sheriffs will not do anything on a class four road, so you have to report it to Fish and Game. So they were called in.
I'd like, I'd like to see it, even with the town, the town needs to get rid of this car. And we've done, we, I think we've had to do it before, somebody else's car, but. What do you think?
I mean, it's up there, but I think if we know who the person is, if the town's taking care of it, then they should be.
Bill?
Getting a bill for it. I mean, I'm not opposed to somebody taking care of it at all, but I think if we know who that owner is, then.
Did you ever, when we talked a little bit about Sasha, did you ever have a state lease?
No, I, I haven't.
Was the junkyard in Motown though, Joe was available, you know, go check it up and.
Have to bring it to them, someone have to bring it to them, go up, get it, bring it to them. There's also been a lot of loud night traffic up there as well, so. Which I did let Berlin PD know and they are going to, um, swing a little bit around because they have the bottom half of the road and the top half of the road, so anything that they hear in between, they can stop, but.
They did, it's all hours of the night.
These are like.
And it's, it's between two groups of people.
Yes.
It's either, um.
Chris?
I don't think it's him all the time, but it's his friends and acquaintances.
Are these some trucks or ATVs or what?
Trucks.
Trucks.
Going up onto the trails and just.
They're on the road. And out in any pull-off that they can, but it's trucks, ATVs aren't the problem.
No.
There hasn't been any, any thing, but it's between, between Chris at one end of the road and there's someone else who lives down in the Berlin section that they have, it's a younger guy and one of his friends will come up.
But now that we have, that we supposedly have a contract with the Washington County Sheriff and we can pinpoint activity that we want them to check out, can we tell them this one?
I don't think they'll do anything more than speed enforcement.
Yeah.
But isn't that what they're doing in this scheme of their party?
No, they just.
Yeah, um, and I'm pretty sure, um, Stepan had mentioned in a side comment that someone had a fire up there last weekend and left it burning, mattresses and box burns. I don't want to quote him that he said that, but, so.
It's wild, wild west up there, I guess so.
Well, if you, if you talk some Monty, he will tell you that that road is the Wild West and that's what they've called it for years. But the majority is not bad, the majority is not bad, it's the handful. But I'm just thinking coming into hunting season, get it, try to get it calmed down before hunting season so that, because there's a lot of hunters that go up there.
Yeah.
There's hunting camps on both sides and there's a lot of people.
Oh, for someone that's correct.
Or someone just, one of the two. I mean, honestly, I'm surprised sergeants or mcgills haven't called. Honestly, I'm really surprised they haven't called.
That's cool.
That sergeant, yeah, that sergeant, Steve.
Steve.
I'm surprised they haven't, I'm, I'm really surprised they haven't.
So, I mean, how long do we wait as far as getting a tow truck up there to get rid of that car?
I mean, I'd say, I'd say, just do it.
And have them send the bill to Motown for now, before we ever can track down who did it, I mean, I don't, I don't know.
The vehicle ID won't tell us who it is?
Uh, I think Stepan knows who it is, because I think Stepan reported it the first time. So I think Stepan knows who it is, or at least as a name, because the sheriffs were going to go track them down to move it off them again.
Can we write up, I mean, I don't know, can we send these folks a letter and saying, you know, like, hey, can you?
I don't know.
Something to the, you know, your neighbor, you know, something about.
I don't know if the tow truck could even get up there.
They had to have, uh, a tractor and pull it out. I guess, maybe that is what they did before, they pulled it, they pulled the car down the hill and then they got a tow truck and got the rest of it, I think.
Yeah, yeah, because the, the tow truck's not going to make it up there.
So it'll pull it down to your yard.
But I mean, the select board couldn't write a letter to these folks, tell them that their, their behavior is, you know, affecting.
If, if Stepan knows who it is, I don't know, maybe we can ask Stepan tomorrow, he's going down.
Yeah, I want to say Stepan knows who it is.
Anyways, all right, we'll take some action before it snows, I'm sure.
So you want to talk to Stepan or?
Yeah, Sasha, Sasha, Stepan, see what you find out.
And what would we do, pull it down and put her on a truck or a tow truck and then bring it to the guy in Motown or something?
Yeah, or whatever. The contractor had to get $300 for it. They'd cover the towing maybe.
Yeah.
Well, let's see if we can find out the owner and then maybe. Well, let's see if we can find out the owner and then maybe we can talk to Nate about in this truck, who paid Nate in this truck up there to just hit it down where a tow truck could get it.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other, do you have any other old business?
No, that was it.
Okay. Tom?
No, I'm, I'm just going, carrying along, working on some stuff, but I don't really have any major update from the last meeting.
Okay.
I forgot a couple things too, that's going through my business, so I have to go back to old business.
Okay, well, um, I wanted to talk about the Pony Farm car. Do we have a letter by now?
No.
Okay. Do we have a letter for GMP? You're not in power?
No, I didn't know that we were still gonna do it because there was more that was found out.
No. No, I had it in the, in the minute. Tom will work with Sasha composing a letter to the resident, that's for this, to remind him of the dangers. And then let's say, uh, let's say, left a message, uh, Green Mountain Power for Jared. Perhaps going above him should be done and compose another letter to GMP. So I don't know if it was definitely, but that's I mean, as I said in that, that email, I don't know how far up you'd have to go. It doesn't seem that it seems like they're, they're, they're violating, you know, environmental laws and, and there's no, nobody that really pleases it and so on, so. But, uh, I, I think, uh, something like this is easy enough to, I should think, take care of. So I don't know, I, I, anyway, just, let's, let's work on that. If you need my help, you know, let me know.
And they did have cars on Pony Farm yesterday when I came through. There was two, like, right at the end.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I, I saw one, it was like, somebody had to go around. It was like parked like right there with the stop sign. It's like, who, who, you know, what's-
And there was two, they were like this.
That's like ridiculous.
But in defense of those folks, I've biked, I've been by and they have a little small blue car. That's, they've got it tucked in there, is, is, you know, pretty, I mean, I think they're attempting to, I mean, I don't know about when they have two or three cars, but the one car is just before their driveway, kinda just tucked in there. And that doesn't seem that bad, but I, I agree, when I've seen two cars there, it gets a little dicey.
Well, these aren't even in the driveway. They were in the road.
Yeah, and, and, and again, but there were no cars in the driveway when I went by last week. And there was just this one car and I watched somebody pull around it to, to be able to get out to the highway. And I thought maybe that somebody was sitting in the car. I looked, nobody's sitting in the car or anything, just, just there, but there was nobody, no signs of anybody at the house. So I don't know who parks there. Could be their guests, could be, I don't know. Okay, so other old business, uh, let's see, on the list, uh, the tanker truck.
Yes.
That was interesting.
That's-
It just sent-
That was one of the things I, so everybody saw that there are used trucks out there. And I'm not, you know, I just wanna make sure that, you know, it's possible that we could get a good used truck, you know, within fairly quickly.
Right.
You know, it's just somebody, somebody would have to go make a road trip and go look at it. Somebody that we can count on, uh, if we were able to find a truck for half the price.
And not have to go to China.
Yeah. You know, Pennsylvania or Massachusetts.
Yeah, right, yeah.
You know, someplace, I don't know, it, it might be worth a shot.
Yeah. Oh.
Stepan's gone.
Yeah, Stepan's gone.
The only thing I worry with that is you're gonna finance something that is, you know, ninety-six. You're looking at twenty-something years old.
Right.
And you're gonna finance it, how, like, is it gonna last through your financing?
Well, that's exactly right.
That's the, that's where I'm looking.
Yeah, but there were some-
There were some up in the two thousand ten?
There was one, yeah, it was two thousand ten or eleven or something. I mean, I, I don't know anything about it in terms of whether they would fit the bill or if it fires upon, but-
But then if we got a new one, it would be, you know, you get something that's two thousand and ten. Is it gonna last, that's, that's already twelve years old. Is it gonna last ten years, five years, twelve more years? A new one, I don't know what they know, it would seem to be a way to have a, a used along life expectancy for, for the town.
And you're probably having it come with a warranty too.
So, you know, I mean, it's it's this pros, you know, it's like anything you buy used, right? I mean, it can be good or-
But if you can get a hundred thousand dollar truck, and this new truck is four hundred and twenty-five thousand, you could still take a hundred thousand dollar truck and put fifty thousand dollars into it and still be two hundred thousand dollars ahead, you know, uh-
Yeah.
Just saying, you know.
No, no, not nice.
But I'll talk to Stepan some more about that, I mean, I'm not, it's just something to think about, you know.
Yeah.
The tough part is, is you get someone to be able to expedite that, you know, to do the, the legwork of going to look at used ones and maybe all it's like.
So if it costs two thousand dollars to have somebody, you know, to have somebody be our broker.
Yeah.
Still, or-
Maybe there's someone out there who does that sort of thing, I don't know. Yeah. That's true, 'cause I don't think you could ask Stefan, he's not going around looking at trucks, you know, he's gonna, I mean, he's got a pretty full plate right now, it is everything.
Yeah.
He's not sitting around, traveling around, I don't know. But I do think there's such a thing as tanker truck brokers and they'll go around finding who used tanker.
I think, you know, if we look, we could probably find somebody. And the other thing I was gonna mention was the, uh, I got the, the revised proposal for a fight.
Oh, okay.
Okay, you know, they changed the wording, so they're gonna do the reclaiming this year and the paving next year. And they'll suddenly change, the price is still the same.
Oh, good.
If you can sign this.
Okay.
When you're signing this stuff.
Okay.
We're all set on that.
So they're gonna-
Terrific.
Strip it this fall-
Yeah.
And then pave it next year.
Yeah.
So it'll be, it'll-
It'll be like a gravel road. Right, yeah, they'll strip it and grade it up and it'll probably be smoother than what it is now.
Right, it's pretty probably, yeah.
Oh, there's like six inches of difference between the shoulder and where-
No, no, it cycles through there.
Yeah.
Tricky.
I did talk to Martin, you know, he's in favor of doing it.
Yeah.
This way.
Okay, good. Um, other new business are actually, this is for reports of communications, like, um, Tom and I are actually meeting, uh, Peter, the, the Zorkchak, who's with Stone Environmental tomorrow, the next, our next stormer project over at the sand pit.
Okay.
And, uh, so, um, which-
And there's someone from that room.
Well, I don't know if she's gonna be there or not, because she's, she's just accepted another position.
I know, but she's not retiring till the end of the month.
Yeah, right, yeah, yeah, so maybe she'll, yeah, maybe she'll be there. So. So that's all, that was one of the five projects that they had applied for grant. And, um, also, uh, Tom and I met when, when, we met with Martin regarding the, um, moving the flashing light sign, um, we talked to them about the crosswalk in the village and it's submitting another one, 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 one. But you think that we need to talk with Chris Hunt?
Yeah, I found an email and I thought that would, yeah. I thought, I thought maybe we should have a conversation with him as we're working on the permit. Maybe have a rough draft of the permit with us.
Right, right.
And then, then Frank reminds me that I think you and I need to talk to Chris Hunt as well to, for this at the ready thing. Or have you talked to him?
I haven't talked to him, I thought we're all set.
No, I mean, Cheryl Lynn sent us another thing saying we're, we're not all set.
Oh.
Even though you filled it, yeah. We're still in, we're still hanging out, yeah. We have to figure that out. Maybe I'll call, try calling you during the week.
Yeah, call me tomorrow.
Yeah, all right.
Yeah, we can, we'll, we'll talk tomorrow morning about that.
Yeah.
And that's all I had for, for old business. Anything else on the list?
Well, if there's any, I, I'm trying to get someone, but when we were at the town garage in the back, you know, I have someone who can, is gonna fix the trim boards. But before we do that, and I was fortunately there with the tree board, we have, there's a maple back there that we don't really need to take down, but we need down some of the climb.
Yellow birch.
And that was the yellow birch?
Yeah.
Okay, it didn't look like the yellow birch, but whatever. There's a yellow birch there, I'm not, I'm not gonna argue with the tree guy. But we need someone who will cut, just do the branches, 'cause there's no place, you can't get a truck back there with a bucket.
Right.
So I know a guy who tree climbs, but like he's been, you know, like everybody's been really busy, so I don't know if anybody else knows someone who's a-
All I know is tree work.
What?
All I know is that my player tree works.
But they, they do it with buckets and stuff.
They, not necessarily.
I, I do everything.
You do everything, yeah.
But they would've done stuff in the town too, probably.
They did, they cut the big tree, they did the big corn.
Oh, so they would have all of it, okay.
Yeah, they, they have everything. They're not cheap, but they, they're, they're good.
Okay, so should we reach out to them or something? This is, it's not a big job, it's like ten branches or something.
Just shriveled branches, yeah.
But they're, you know, you gotta, you gotta climb up the tree together, you know? Is there some, one of the branches is sitting in the peak of the building? And that's what knocked the trim off.
Sounds like you need somebody, you know, an expert to do it, you know?
Yeah, no, this guy I have is, I'll, I'll try him again. You know, he goes up with ropes and pulleys and all kinds of stuff. So it's just, you know, you gotta make sure he has proper insurance.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? New business?
Okay, let's sign away.
So, we all sign this?
He just takes one of us. There she is. No, oh, that, I thought you looked at the-
No, this, yeah, this is the-
We probably oughta have to sign that, yes.
Yeah, I think, I think we could help or I think we should.
I have a feeling we'll be meeting next week. Okay. Does everybody want me to do more first?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are we the cake judges?
That's what I heard.
I'll be chatting up, there's gonna be some stiff competition. Johnny's gonna make a cake, Karen, Moyn's making a cake, and Mrs. Moyn's making a cake.
Okay, this is a cake.
Well, you don't sign it, do we sign every page of your-
No.
I just did that.
We just pass through the chocolate, right?
And I'm signing the corrected CV fiber agreement.
Good.
There we go. No. Regularly sign it. Oh, that's yours? Oh, I thought that was Tom. Man, it doesn't look like Tom.
It's clearly an R.
Oh, what? You never sign like that.
At time I phoned, had to sign on my phone.
Electronically.
Oh, that was the one.
It's clearly an R.
Well, I like the way you didn't have glasses.
What's Tom's scribble?
But you did say you didn't have your glasses on.
That's not true.
That's why.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I didn't ask for that. All the fans say hi.
Hi.